Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee’s meeting for Wednesday, October 22, 2025. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city’s website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith. Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the Rules of Council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Paul Canoni. Paul, are you with us? We’ll come back to Paul if he enters the room. Our next registered speaker is Ikona Halmaquina.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikona Halmaquina, and the Grand Inca the Airflock Confederacy of Average and the American People. Do not replace the American, the American dream, for an American nightmare. Our freedom and our liberty are not up for debate and will remain intact. Do not continue to perpetuate an economic war upon the poor. Unemployment, federal furloughs, healthcare, daycare, food, and public transportation are all causing most households to become unstable, unaffordable, and out of reach. With the promotion of AI, thousands of people will be out of jobs, causing more people to face economic insecurity. I appeal to the moral fabric of your most inner spiritual principles to act in good faith to ensure that people do not feel hungry. I remember this history. I have read this book before. I’ve saw the movie. I already know how this is supposed to end, but I stopped by to tell you, not on my watch, you can stop this train of destruction and implement meaningful, innovative measures to stabilize the local economy. We stand collectively against oppression, racism, classism, social and economic oppression, and assimilation. We stand against any form of government that attempts to subvert the supreme law of the land, the Constitution. Every year on July 4, thousands of people gather to celebrate the Declaration of Independence, but we fail to enforce it. It calls for a contract, and the first element of contract is offer and acceptance. It is needed in order for a contract to be valid. So, you must have one’s consent to govern over one. The Declaration of Independence states that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, like liberty and a pursuit of happiness, it is the right and a duty of the people to alter or abolish it. We are in uncharted territory, but it’s yet still so familiar. We can do something. I urge all nine of you to stand up and take a maverick approach to stabilizing the housing issues, the food insecurity, the transportation issues, the schools closing, and restore access to the people. I thank you for hearing my voice. I also hope that these words stay with you and resonate with you, and you go home, you take them with you to bed, and think about a meaningful solution to ensuring that people do not feel hungry. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lori Fitzgerald.
Do I speak here? Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here representing the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood. We are a registered community organization, and I’m here to speak about the proposed legislation regarding RCOs. I submitted a letter, which I hope all of you have received. I’m not going to reread the letter. I just want to restate and reaffirm our stance in that, which is that we object to suspension of the RCO program in its entirety, which is kind of our summary understanding of what the legislation is. And we are open to conversation about amendments to it. We have not had sufficient time to understand what amendments are, and I kind of understand that maybe they’ve even been changed within the last day or two. So, we are asking that conversation about that, those amendments, be tabled until the RCOs have a chance to weigh in. I just strongly feel that the Registered Community Organization program is about getting community involvement, community feedback. So, if this legislation or this program is suspended, that in and of itself kind of undercuts the whole spirit of that system. So, we’re just asking for the communities to have a voice and a seat at the table in the conversation about any changes to it, and we think that it needs to continue to exist. That’s all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Andrea Boikowicz.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi. My name is Andrea Boikowicz. I live in central Oakland, and I’m the Executive Director of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, one of three registered community organizations in Oakland. We’ve been an RCO from the very beginning of the program, eight years ago. Because the neighborhoods we serve experience a lot of development pressure, OPDC has worked with community organizations like Bellfield Area Citizens Association, Oak Cliff Community Organization, and the Oakland Community Council to host development meetings for decades. By creating a public process that ties this activity directly to the Department of City Planning, the RCO program has made this kind of review and public engagement more consistent, effective, accessible, and equitable. I’m not aware of a single RCO in the city that doesn’t have ideas about how the program can be improved, but I’m also not aware of one that believes it should be eliminated entirely. Pausing or eliminating the program and the dam process would be harmful to our communities and serve no constructive purpose. It would make it harder for the Department of City Planning to do its job, and it would deprive communities of information about projects and plans that directly affect them. Please vote no to pausing or eliminating the RCO program. Please consider alternative proposals to improve and simplify the program and the dam processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
I’m Elena Zaitsov. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. I am President of the Oak Cliff Community Organization, and I’m here today representing that organization. The Oak Cliff Community Organization, a registered community organization, strongly opposes Teresa Kelsmith’s legislation, which would eliminate the RCO program. In the event that the Kelsmith legislation doesn’t pass today, and the Department of City Planning’s counterproposal is put up for a vote, we feel any discussion or vote on the City Planning’s proposal should be postponed to allow more time for RCOs to discuss the changes and consider the impact of those changes on their neighborhoods. This postponement is needed because RCOs were only made aware of these proposals a week ago. By no means should the RC program be eliminated. We realize changes to it may be needed, but more time needs to be given to understand all the aspects of the City Planning proposal. For example, the changes in requirements for development activities meeting. The survey results cited as justification for these changes do not support changing the square foot, number of units, or parking thresholds. For example, with 50 responders, only five people said the number of units is too low. How does that outweigh the other 45? Only two people voted for dropping the parking threshold, yet that’s to be eliminated. These specific thresholds are the ones that affect residential areas the most. Without them, residents won’t know what is being built in their neighborhoods and lose their voice about the impacts. As for having fewer development activity meetings, dropping the art and historic review from requiring dams will take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kurt Colborne.
I’m Kurt Colborne, Treasurer of the Registered Community Organization Swiss Home Forward. I’m here to ask council to reject the proposal to suspend the RCO program and to delay any vote on the Department of City Planning’s draft revised ordinance until review and input by the citizens of Pittsburgh and the RCOs can be obtained. We submitted some comments to Barbara Warwick yesterday, but I’m supplementing that today. Our RCO was formed just this year, the result of lessons learned from the Irish Center Project. We found out the hard way, citizens not represented by an RCO don’t really have much power to preserve the character of their own neighborhoods against deep-pocket developers, their national lobbying groups, and their local chapters. The developer, in our case, issued a formal legal challenge to our standing to speak at the zoning meeting. We formed an RCO to be prepared if a proposed development threatened the integrity of our neighborhood again. I view RCOs as sort of a union of concerned neighbors, a collective bargaining unit, if you will, representing the neighborhood in development matters. And I liken the proposal to suspend RCOs to union busting, an attempt to quash the collective voice of the residents of Pittsburgh neighborhoods. We are opposed to being silenced in this way. Now, the DCP’s draft revisions only became available last week, so there’s been scant time for anyone to review them. I see a newer version today, proposed by two members of council. There’s been scant time for anyone to review them or give thoughtful consideration to the consequences of their implementation. The sense of urgency to adopt the revisions seems unnecessary and unwise. We have given the ordinance a preliminary review. Some revisions are understandable and desirable, but others seem flatly unacceptable. And take note, the one change specifically requested by council to have RCO boards elected rather than selected is not part of the DCP revision. More time is needed to design and consider the revision to Chapter 178E. We are ready to work with the city to do so within a reasonable timeframe, but today’s deadline to act seems arbitrary. It appears council wishes to express its frustration with the DCP for not moving faster. If so, do that as you see fit, but don’t do it by punishing the citizens of Pittsburgh. Don’t rob us of our collective voice in development matters. Maintain the RCO structure and take the time to revise the ordinance in a thoughtful and organized manner that accommodates the public interest and public input. That’s it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Isaac Falvey.
I’m Isaac Falvey. I’m a resident of Spring Garden, and I’m also on the board of the Community Alliance of Spring Garden in East Deutchtown. CASGED is our acronym, and we just want to give testimony that we are completely against the RCO-proposed legislation by Teresa Kelsmith. We are a new RCO. We spent a lot of time getting the processes in place to have our voice heard. We feel that this legislation is being rushed for someone who’s leaving for some reason. It’s kind of interesting that this was proposed after the councilperson had said she wasn’t going to run again. Not trying to imply anything, it’s just pointing out that I don’t think that they would be doing this if they weren’t running. But regardless, even if this is being passed, we are completely against it. We want our voices to be heard, and it seems like all of the other presenters that I’ve heard before me, I echo all of their sentiments as to all the reasons why, so I don’t want to get into them again, but just to let you know, us constituents in Spring Garden and East Deutchtown on the north side are fully against this and would like the council to respectfully vote no or table it and have more discussion so communities can have a better voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Eric Cath.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to address today. I’m basically going to echo everything Isaac just said, but I’ll try to make it quick because I’ll say it in a slightly different way. But my name is Eric Cath. Like I said, I live in Spring Hill currently, and I’m the Board President of the Community Alliance of Spring Garden in East Deutchtown. We are an RCO as of last spring. I’m also in opposition to Councilmember Kelsmith’s proposed ordinance to suspend Chapter 178E. I understand that City Planning has an amendment coming out and everything, and I just spoke to Councilmember Wilson. So, I do just want to say, though, just so that it’s kind of on record, I am pro-development. You know, I believe we need development and private investment in our city, especially housing, and I mean housing of all types, low-income, middle, you know, missing middle, infill, large, luxury, everything. I believe that we need to build more, and that’s going to, you know, be one of the large, sort of, the most important ingredients to, you know, stabilizing rents and, you know, just our city’s prosperity. And I say that just to give more firepower to my support of RCOs. I don’t know of any kind of negative effects that, you know, development activities meetings really have on development. I think they would occur, you know, friction would occur with or without RCOs. But I do think there’s three reasons why I support RCOs in general for the city. It allows for our group to be informed about, you know, the development pipeline in our neighborhood that we otherwise might miss. The development activities meetings give us opportunity to lift the curtain on projects and offer our feedback. And the third reason is that it establishes standards for RCOs, which make for better quality groups throughout the city. I think that one’s really important. It took our group 18 months of really, really hard work to become an RCO, and I appreciate that minimum standard. It made us a better organization. We revamped our website. We dusted off our bylaws. We signed conflict of interest statements, all, you know, all things that we might get a little sloppy or lazy on at an op-ed for the RCO program. So, I think it really holds our feet to the fire. Obviously, you know, there can be small improvements, but I, you know, I think the program works very well in the city as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
I was here yesterday, and I was here in regards to Greyhound, now owned by Flex. I made my petition known to the council. However, I stayed after everything was done, and I watched council give accolades in regards to Park and Recreations, and I watched a preacher preach to the choir. I came today because I couldn’t sleep. I am the granddaughter of Ernest and Mary Francis Moore, whom had all their children where Emmett Till was murdered. She had 18 children, and in 1950, they moved to Ohio, and 55, he was murdered, but still, they grew together with Emmett Till’s family there. In my midnight hour, I was basically bothered by the senior citizens in Pittsburgh and no one willing to help them in regards to Greyhound. I understand this in Mr. Wilson’s district. When everything was said and done yesterday, I met with Mr. Wilson over there, and the first thing he said to me with fervor or fervor was, “You hung up on my staff.” I am here to apologize to him. And his staff, I meant no ill intent. My only intention here today is I would like for the people that were voted in the council to collectively, some kind of way, address the issue of the Flex building and the senior citizens that go in there and utilize the kiosks. Keetza, who stands before you, was able to utilize the kiosks, even though I was stranded in Youngstown, Ohio, purchased a ticket, and no bus came to get me. I was told to stay outside the building that was locked until 4:30 a.m. However, I had family that was able to come get me, bring me to Pittsburgh. My petition before you guys is, I’ve called the Better Business Bureau, I called their Attorney General, I called for the aging, I called the hotline. Everyone stated it’s out their jurisdiction. I am here and only here because I am not hatched. I had a mother. She is now elderly in her 80s, and if she was to go to Greyhound to go look at her funny-looking grandchildren, I would want someone there now at the Felix Building to help my mother. And I hope that this burden comes upon your guys and that you guys that were voted in by thousands, if you called the Better Business Bureau, there’s thousands behind you. If I called them one concerned citizen, please hear my cry and have a beautiful day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is David Tessitore, Banksville Neighborhood, City Council District 2. In 1994, I initiated the Citizen Advisory Panel for the Southwestern Pennsylvania Regional Planning Commission as an open membership proactive public participation process and later became its chair. I uncovered the misallocation of 40% of the funding needed for minimum maintenance of existing transportation infrastructure, $12 billion, and reported it to the U.S. DOT Inspector General. They got away with it because of the reach of the Allegheny Conference, but it didn’t stop the Fern Hollow Bridge from falling. While with the cap, we were told that MAGLEV would go down the middle of a new turnpike to be built through the west end of Pittsburgh, i.e. the neighborhoods of District 2. I did not learn the exact route of those neighborhoods. This last weekend, I learned of the extent of the reach of the conference throughout the public sector of Western Pennsylvania and beyond, and how it prevents anything that MAGLEV investors think might distract from their efforts. At least you think that was a long time ago and not of concern now? I remind you that it took over 50 years from first planning until East Street Valley’s 1,000 homes were replaced by I-279. Took over 60 years until Le Mans Fayette got its ongoing completion. MAGLEV is still on the books. It’s continuing to move forward. Why do you think the Port Authority renamed itself Pittsburgh Regional Transit? It’s because they’re playing a name game to help get federal approvals. It did this before. When the West Busway was proposed, it was called the Airport Busway for two reasons. One was because of a congressman on a key committee who opposed rail transit except for connecting a city with its airport. The other was because a busway and a rail line are given the same identification in federal transit applications. They’re called fixed guideways, and it made the project seem to be a rail connection to Pittsburgh’s airport. Of course, it wasted all its fund on half the project, and then by special dispensation got around needing to pay it back. So, in changing to PRT, DC will think it encompasses Greensburg. It’s set to be used to advance MAGLEV. As with the Southern Beltway, the project will likely be built in segments, starting with the highest value first, a turnpike through District 2 neighborhoods, because it also serves highway traffic and can point to the congestion on the Parkway West. It will take a swath through the neighborhoods at least as wide as the present Airport Expressway and wider where it needs to cut through hillsides. Maybe Sheridan Park has been left to deteriorate as a possible approach to the river, along with half of Sheridan. The other neighborhoods are possibilities. The next District 2 representative will need to address this. In 1996, I was confronted by the President of the Allegheny Conference and told, “David, you need to get with the program and help push it through, and then after you’ve been doing that for a while, you’ll have an opportunity to put your item on the agenda and get yours.” At the time, I thought, “My agenda item is to stop your harming communities.” Will council continue to go along with emptying out the city to the airport? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The missing child, Sarice Taylor, Special Agent Sunshine. Yesterday, I stood up here and I said, “I cannot be Sunshine all the time. Sometimes I have to be thunder and lightning.” And I promise you, the lightning is a spirit, and it has a name. And when I call on it, he comes. And when you see lightning, you cannot deny what you see, but I promise you, when you see it, something or someone gets hit by it. Some people ain’t here today, wonder why. The wisdom for today again comes from Proverbs 14:19. It says, “Evildoers will bow down in the presence of the good and the wicked at the gates of the righteous.” Lavelle, the little stunt with the elevator, you know, trying to get a reaction, y’all are doing a lot to defame my character, to try to make me look like somebody else. But I promise you, when you conjure up lightning, it’s going to come every time. Every time, it’s going to come, and one of y’all going to get hit every time. It’s going to be your pockets, your house, your car, whatever it is, whatever he choose. When you attack me any kind of way, Lavelle, why do you keep trying to defame my character when you wear a dress after hours? A wig, lipstick lashes? Why don’t you come in here as who you are, instead of trying to project how you feel about yourself on others? It doesn’t work. I’m going to still be who I am, no matter how much fiery darts you throw at me. I’m going to still be who I am, in Jesus’ name. The promise for today is on hope. It comes from Romans 8:31 through 33, and it says, “If God is with us, no one can defeat us. He did not spare His own Son, but gave Him for us all. So, with Jesus, God will surely give us all things.” Who can accuse the people of God? Who can choose? Who can accuse? I’m sorry. The people of God, the people God has chosen. No one, because God is the one who makes them right. So, it doesn’t matter how much you trying to defame my character, Lavelle. God has already approved a position for me on this realm, on the heavenly realm, on the spiritual realm. My ranking is higher than yours, yet you’re the President of this City Council. You sit on a lot of boards. You direct a lot of traffic of hate, and it needs to stop, in Jesus’ name. Lord, thank you for loving me and using me as a vessel to do your will, not mine.
Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Have we been joined by registered speaker Paul Canoni? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee’s agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and we have one deferred paper, Bill 2109.
Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article 9, Boards, Authorities, and Commissions, Chapter 178E, Registered Community Organizations, by temporarily suspending the enforcement of Chapter 178E until further action of council.
Motion to hold, but can we have brief discussion for one week?
We need a motion to approve first.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Second, discussion, Councilwoman Kelsmith.
So, I do intend to hold this for one week, and I want to thank Sean Carter and Council President Lavelle, who had a meeting with us yesterday with City Planning and myself. And I want to thank Andrew Dash and the others that were on the meeting, including Sharonda and Director Bay. But I want to say that there is, I put this in initially, and I mentioned this before, it was a conversation, a televised meeting that we had regarding some other issues, and the RCOs came up, and it was discussed that we need to have some changes in the RCOs, some restructuring. And I agree that there needs to be restructuring. I personally have never liked them. I think it gives a privileged view, information, when it should be the same information for all public. And I think that we, you know, a lot of times people are hand-selected on who’s going to receive information and how they’re going to disseminate that throughout the city. And I think RCOs do, a lot of people are volunteers, they do a lot of good work in the community and do some great things. But we have some... But we have some that don't speak for the community, and the community will tell you that. I have one that, since I've been elected, they've been asking me to shut them down. And so I was just, and the community just has never appreciated or valued what they bring to the table. So I think there are issues with some of the RCOs. Now, that's something that I could just decide not to sign or do something. I like, I get that. But I think that we have to get this right because city planning has to take an active role. We shouldn't be counting on volunteers, Councilwoman Warwick. I do want to thank you too for putting in some suggestions and some amendments. And I want to hold today because Councilwoman Gross also has some suggestions that she wants to put in. And I want to do it one time, amend them one time, and make sure we get it right before we put it forward. But I'm not, I don't want to continue to hold it over and over and repeatedly. There needs to be some restructuring. I think, I have said this since I've got, since I came here, is that, and I actually hired Dan Friesen as our city solicitor because it's something he said, is that the city of Pittsburgh has a nonprofit issue. We're not talking about big nonprofits alone. There's a lot of things happening in the city that are determined by nonprofits and don't necessarily speak for the residents. And I made a post I put up yesterday about, you know, something, and not even in my district, I can't get over the feedback we're getting from people that typically will never come down to city council, and they don't always, they're not always on social media, you know, people. So I think that we're, there's an issue overall that we, and I did call for a post agenda on nonprofits, and I'm going to schedule that pretty soon. I have a lot of information, a ton of information. And I think a lot of times people get funding and they'll, you know, they'll fight this battle because they're getting funding, they're getting public dollars, but then the public's not involved totally engaged in the way that they need to be or should be. And so I have an issue with them. I always have. But my intent with this was not to do anything to harm the RCOs, but was to make it so that council could work with them and the more people in the community, the city would be responsible for disseminating information so that it wasn't just coming from volunteers and that we could hold somebody accountable if people weren't getting the information that they should get. So that's a conversation we're going to have when the bill does come back up. But when it does come back up, we'll amend by substitution. And Councilwoman, do you want to say something?
Councilwoman Warwick. Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. So I mean, just to, just a quick comment, just overall on the process here. So I know we have been having, at least among members, a conversation about RCOs for a very long time. I feel like it's been going on since I got here, which is creeping up on three years. So I think there, on the one hand, you know, and, you know, with the city planning department, sometimes there's sort of like a feeling of like, well, when is it coming? When is it coming? When is it coming? And you have to sort of do something explosive in order to get the thing. And so here, what it feels like a little bit is, and just so I'm clear, Councilwoman, so these amendments are from city planning with a couple of changes from yourself and myself.
Correct.
So again, it feels, and I just saw these, and again, so, and I'll speak to the, so personally, I had concerns about two things, right? The development activities meeting being the responsibility of the RCO, both to host, to disseminate, to, you know what I mean? And interesting, because two representatives from my RCOs are here with the Irish Center Project, right? So that was, you know, a massive project, and I felt that the RCO, the singular RCO at the time, sort of had this unfair burden of kind of having to own this thing that just became a huge, you know, in the media and like outcry. And it was, and actually, a second RCO was born out of it, which I think was great because it was, you know what I mean? Just to really make sure that all the communities could be covered by the program. But, so I think that, you know, we have an entire department of city planning. We have, you know, paid professors, they have budget, whatever. So when it comes to these development activities meetings, it seems to me that it is, you know, the city should be managing those meetings. And of course, the RCO can disseminate the information and all of that, that's great. But it, I, so that was, that was one concern. And I think that is addressed in city planning's amendments. And then the other one was about around, so this notion, which I have heard as well in not all of my communities, but in some, where the RCO doesn't like represent the community. And again, that, whether that's a perception or an actual, I'm not commenting on that, but I do have some RCOs and not others who simply have, they, their boards are elected by the community. And that seems to be a pretty good process for kind of both bringing community into the RCO, right? Like bringing people in because you can get that email, you have election, right? And sort of spreading awareness about all the great community work that the RCOs are doing, and then also helping alleviate this notion that like if they don't represent, you know, so it's like, and most of the time, to be honest, in the, in the RCOs that do elections, most of the time, not all of the time, there's rarely like, you know, it's just sort of someone wants to be on the board and they get elected and it's relatively smooth. Sometimes not, sometimes it's contentious, but that also kind of shows, you know, where communities maybe are divided about this, that, or the other. At any rate, so I just, you know, I appreciate Councilwoman Smith. I mean, I appreciate the sort of need to kind of, you know, feel like you have to do something drastic to get the attention, to get something moving. But this, these amendments, I just saw this morning, and that's just not, with things that have this much impact, and maybe these came out a week ago, and maybe I missed it, I don't want to say, you know, but council members really do have a lot coming at us all the time. So for the city departments, you know, when things come out like this, it is helpful to sit down. And again, I totally apologize if there was a meeting that I missed or I had an offer. Okay. But, you know, like.
You don't miss a thing.
But, you know, it is helpful to even just, you know, like, hey, we, we're looking at doing these, do you have any comments? That would, that would help avoid this kind of like scramble at the table, I think, moving forward anyway. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. This is more just process, and this is my suggestion. I'll certainly defer to the sponsor. These, I know, to your point, Councilwoman Warwick, I know, and for many of the RCOs, this feels rushed, but it's not really rushed. I don't think we have to rush it. I think what may be helpful for us as well as the public is if we actually did today the amendment by substitution, were able to hear from planning to sort of walk us through, like even myself and Councilwoman Wilson are having a sidebar now about some of the amendments and what they do and don't do, so that we all sort of have a baseline understanding. And then we hold this for a week, two weeks, three weeks if necessary, however long necessary, so that members can give additional input, RCOs can reflect on the bill that's actually on the table. This morning, we heard RCO, members from RCOs calling in saying, please don't ban the program, which is what the bill currently sit on the table would do. So it would be my suggestion that we today amend by substitution, sort of just walk through it to educate us all and the public so that they understand. And then we hold this bill and then make additional tweaks, additional adjustments as necessary over the course of one, two, three, however many weeks are necessary to ensure that we're getting this right. That's just my personal process suggestion for us as a body.
Further discussion?
I will just say that I'm open to the suggestion, but I do want to say this was never intended to stop the RCOs. It was intended to take that time to suspend them, but then the administration and others went out and sent things out to the community and made it sound like we were doing all kinds of horrible things to the RCOs, which we were not. We were trying to get it right. And we were trying to make sure that we suspended it enough time so that we could, for enough time, that we could make whatever amendments needed to be made. But this is what happens when you go to social media and to other, instead of having dialogues with council people. And I will just say that that was never the intention. It was never intended to stop RCOs. It was trying to get a handle on what the community feels and how council feels. I think the city planning also thinks that they were elected to represent the city of Pittsburgh, and they were not. And I think that, you know, there are elected officials here that should be getting information from city planning, from zoning, from, that we don't always receive. And so that, and if you're going to go to an RCO and circumvent the council office, they were elected by the people to represent them. And so I think that there's a battle, and I think this, I never liked the idea of it in the first place. I thought it was never a good idea because you're giving, as I said, you know, before, you're giving a privileged view, the information that the public should have. And, you know, I hear a lot of people talking about how the public should be informed until the public, until we've tried to inform the public. Then all of a sudden, it's an issue. Or engage them and include them. But what I'll say is that I'm willing to hold it now and amend it now and then hold it. But I anticipate that there'll be additional changes.
So we will, oh, Councilwoman Mosley.
Yeah, I just want to say that I really like the council president's suggestion because I do think it would be helpful to have a conversation, to kind of, you know, pull, you know, what's on paper and what, you know, many people are just seeing today and have opportunity to suss it out, if you will, with, you know, planning staff and just use this, you know, not necessarily as an opportunity to really move the legislation forward, but, you know, really give a tutorial to ourselves as well as the public about, you know, what we're talking about. I also want to thank the RCOs that reached out to my office. I do believe, I don't know if anybody's keeping those statistics, but I do think I have the most RCOs of all the council districts. And I got numerous correspondents over the past couple of days about their concerns about the original bill, and I thank them for reaching out. And I have a great relationship with all the RCOs in District I. We work very closely on a variety of issues, not only development issues, but just general community engagement and informing the public and planning and strategy, as well as other, you know, interested citizens, you know, definitely it's not, you know, solely just folks connected to the RCOs, but the public in general. But nevertheless, I have a great relationship with them and look forward to continue to work with them. But I do think that there is some value in having a more detailed discussion today and not necessarily just holding it and moving on to the next topic and giving the public and as well as the RCOs that are really concerned about it, hopefully some comfort about what's in these amendments as well as, you know, to kind of lay out a process moving forward so that, as the council president and my esteemed colleague, the president emeritus, Councilwoman Kail Smith, that, you know, over the next week, two weeks, three weeks, get this right so that the RCOs can feel good about the process, city planning can feel good about the process, and most importantly, other members of this body can feel good about the process. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, some of us have 10 RCOs, some of us have two RCOs, okay? So I only have two active in my entire district. You know, I want to commend Councilwoman Kail Smith. I think, as you said, things get blown.
Turn on your mic. You want to condemn?
Did I say condemn?
No, no.
Commend.
Commend, commend.
No, I think, as you said.
I want people to hear that.
Things get blown out of proportion online, you know, social media. I don't think your intent was ever to kill the RCOs. I think most of what I've seen, what I've read, I haven't read it through at all yet, but it just seems common sense, constructive, you know, tools that need to be put in place. I think there were problems and issues, and I think that's all you were doing was pointing them out. So we're not trying to eliminate, I don't think you're trying to eliminate anybody's voice, we're just trying to make it better. So thank you for your work, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we take a motion to amend? I was just going to say one quick thing. I want to, I want to say for the record, I think that the RCOs, at least the ones that I've worked with in the district I represent and outside, bring great value to the city. And although the program up until now hasn't been perfect, I think it was the first step toward then, you know, possible amended version of what a development activity meeting looks like, what qualifies for a development activity meeting, who runs the meetings, all these questions, which I think these amendments are aiming to address, and I know we'll walk through them. And I agree with the suggested process. I just, to clarify what, one thing that Councilwoman Warwick said, I think you're correct. Council did not receive the actual draft amendment directly. I think RCOs received it on October 14th. Council did not receive it until this morning, so that is correct. I don't think anyone missed any meetings. And I too appreciate the opportunity now to walk through it at the table and to have a few weeks to discuss amongst ourselves and with our own RCOs to see what works best. I think I'll leave it at that for now. I'm sure we'll have questions about the amendments themselves.
Can I just say, if people do have concerns, we're open to the suggestions. Send them to us, and we'll be glad to try to incorporate them if they can. If they can't, then we can. But if you have suggestions, email them to us.
Thank you. And I should have said, Councilwoman Kail Smith, thank you for lighting a fire and getting this going again, because I know there was a survey, I know that there was, I know that intention wasn't to light a fire, but, but thank you for getting, getting this conversation going again.
Thank you, thank you.
So I need a motion to amend, if I could, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Council President. With discussion. We could discuss it now and then approve, yeah.
If, you know the drill, if you introduce yourself and if you would just kindly sort of just walk us through the amendments.
Sure. Andrew Dash, Deputy Director, Department of City Planning. So these amendments come from, as I think was mentioned by members, you know, conversations that were had through initially a survey that was done in 2023, you know, kind of follow-up conversations with, you know, with members and others, you know, around the RCO program. That was done as kind of the, you know, we were nearing five years of having the RCO program in place, I think, you know, as many members have noted, you know, see successes in that, also see continuing issues that need, you know, that need to be, you know, kind of updated and resolved. And so, you know, this amendment, you know, is kind of trying to be responsive, you know, to that. You know, the main things that this legislative amendment does is shift responsibilities, you know, for the, you know, primarily the development activities meetings, you know, where there's a lot of staff time at the department, you know, done, and a lot of responsibility for the RCOs relative to just scheduling and logistics around, you know, around these, working with, you know, kind of multiple community members. This does change that so that, you know, the development activities meetings would be hosted by the Department of City Planning, you know, instead of kind of going through, you know, kind of the process and having the RCOs schedule those develop, schedule and hold those development activities meetings. Shifting the role for the RCOs to be able to get residents engaged as well as to have more of a role in kind of providing a more formal position to the boards and commissions, you know, and leaving kind of the responsibility of the development activities meetings, you know, to the department. In addition, there was a lot of discussion, you know, I think especially, you know, that came through conversations with members around areas that don't have registered community organizations and the opportunity to make sure that there are opportunities for public comment prior to a border commission meeting, you know, in that regard. And so, you know, the intention is that the city will hold essentially the equivalent of a development activities meeting, you know, and in, you know, citywide, you know, so that although places where there are registered community organization would have the opportunity to provide a formal position statement, that all neighborhoods throughout the city would have the opportunity to be able to have some sort of public engagement with developers around and around development prior to it coming to a board and commission. There are some changes to the thresholds that are in the amendments that you see. You know, this was done based on, you know, staff looking through and seeing where we were getting responses from registered community organizations to projects. We wanted to make sure that we were balancing the need for community input and the desire for community input to influence the decision-making process with the time that applicants, especially smaller applicants, were spending getting their project through the development process. And so, you know, there are changes here around, you know, around smaller projects. One big area was around a lot of the projects that go through historic review, you know, where initially every project that goes to the Historic Review Commission had to go through a development activities meeting. We did change those thresholds, so, you know, people building new structures or additions to structures in a historic district are going to have to still go through a development activities meeting, but somebody doing a window replacement or a porch replacement or some of these things that, you know, are, you know, ultimately just adding time to the development process for a homeowner, many. for a homeowner many times looking to do that work that we weren't, you know, kind of adding, adding time and process in those cases. What that does is that, you know, if we look at, looking, looking back at the last year, you know, there were approximately 99, or I think 99 projects that had to go through development activities meetings. This would trim that, you know, by about 40 some percent, you know, but ultimately we would probably still be having, you know, similar, you know, we don't know exactly what the number of meetings that we would be having moving forward because we'd be doing the citywide. So, you know, looking to, you know, to through that, higher impact projects that are going to, you know, that are, that we, we're going to be, want to make sure that we allow for that, you know, kind of influence through kind of a community process. We wanted to allow for that while taking back, you know, some of the projects that, you know, we haven't seen, you know, that influence, you know, be something that's been a part of the process. The third is, you know, making some changes to the standards for certification of registered community organizations. You know, there were, you know, kind of, you know, feedback from RCOs that, you know, maintaining websites, even if it is as simple as a Facebook page, you know, can be a hindrance, you know, to them being able to, you know, to kind of continue to be in good standing, you know, making some changes around, around places like that. Also looking at, you know, we did make some tweaks to the timelines between the development activities meetings and public hearing. If we're going to be able to, if we're going to be setting consistent times monthly or, you know, that communities are going to have development activities meetings, we want to make sure that for applicants with the multitude of boards and commissions that a project could go through, whether that's the Public or Civic Design Commission or Planning Commission, those all happen at different times of the month. So we wanted to be able to make sure that we were, so switching that from 30 days to 21 allows it to be where applicants that, you know, that may have, under the current system, had to wait 50 days between a development activities meeting and an actual time where they can get a hearing and a decision, you know, that we can kind of shrink that, you know, while still making sure that RCOs have the ability to provide, you know, a more formal position statement. And, you know, and also kind of making sure that we're continuing to ensure the role of city council relative to RCOs in the RCO process. And so whether that is, you know, kind of requiring, you know, all the same materials, including the letter from city council at recertification, not only instead of what it is now where it's only at the initial initiation of a registered community organization, you know, that, that is a change that we were looking to make as well as, you know, working with city council, you know, for kind of the dissemination of information relative to development activities meeting and putting council in more of a formal role, you know, with the department and with the RCOs relative to that. So I'm, it was a high-level, you know, kind of overview of the amendments, but happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification.
Thank you. The floor is to Council Presidents.
Just one clarification, just to make sure everyone's, in the changing of the thresholds, in your example, if I'm changing out my windows, I know I'm no longer required development activities meeting, but I still have to go through HRC, and I will still have to go through all the other steps that you would normally have to, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so, so yes, all the rest of the public, or all the rest of the process would stay the same. But, you know, again, you know, kind of the development activities meeting requirement would be, would be changed.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. And I wanted to ask some questions about these changes. So I was listening, and you said the number, this 40%, it would be, the number of meetings would be reduced by 40%. Could you just give me another rundown of why? Or like, just not all the specifics, but just in general, like, why is it being reduced by such a large amount?
Sure. So, I mean, we did.
But like, how? How would, like?
Yeah. So, you know, there, so we, I mean, and that's just a historical look at the last year. We had 99 projects that required development activities meetings, you know, and kind of what's in these amendments, that would be reduced to about 53. You know, there were a couple, I think, that we were still trying.
Can you give me a rundown? Like, what's the, what were the, I don't know, what, you know, the 40 other?
Sure. So.
That wouldn't happen.
I have those up, actually.
Yeah, so some real, real-life examples.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that, you know, there are a lot that are, you know, exterior renovations, whether those are exterior renovations that go to a board like the Planning Commission, you know, like, you know, downtown, there are some places where they're, you know, reusing an existing building but doing like some small modifications to the exterior of the building, you know, which require them to go to Planning Commission. You know, those would be projects, you know, that would not have to go through development activities meetings. As Councilman Lavelle's question to the majority of these, you know, changes, you know, and things that would not have to go through development activities meetings, you know, are things that would go to the Historic Review Commission? You know, because of, you know, kind of the nature of, you know, us determining, you know, how historical integrity is preserved in historic districts, there's a need to have the Historic Review Commission. But, you know, at the same time, you know, because it's not something that is as cut and dry through code as many of our other boards and commissions are, you know, but at the same time, you know, just the impact of a lot of those projects, which, you know, could be, you know, just trying to look through some of these, you know, things like signage, things like, you know, changing non-standard windows, things like porch repairs, you know, things, things of that nature.
All in historic districts?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, you know, and so those are all things that are in historic districts or, you know, that would presently have to go through a development activities meeting that in these amendments we are proposing, that we would say that those don't need to go through. And again, as to the councilman's, as, you know, the council president's question, you know, they would still go through the commission process, but just not through the development activities meeting.
Just help me understand, remind me if a RCO wasn't in favor of the windows, like in the previous, you know, version? Because we're, well, I guess the current version, the current version, yeah, the current version, yeah. Even though we meant it, we didn't pass yet. But, so the current version, if the RCO didn't, wasn't in favor of the windows, how much sway did that have?
I mean, that's really, that's a really hard question to answer. You know, I mean, because, but, but I would say that since most of that is around kind of discussions of historic integrity, you know, that's where, you know, in that case, you know, the commissioners have, you know.
Who has the final say on that?
The Historic Review Commission, you know, is the one.
So like, how much were they swayed by that?
I mean, again, I, you know, it's, it's hard for me to, hard for me to assess, you know, how much the Historic Review Commission was kind of, their minds were changed by resident input, you know, on a process, on a project. But, you know, I mean, I would say that, you know, kind of, the standards do come around kind of interpretation of historic integrity more than they do as to community feedback on something like, you know, windows or materials.
I see that there are these additions in terms of historic nominations, demolition. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to ask one more question on the 40% number before I go into this section. The 40%, you know, let's just take the window example again. Did that meeting have to happen before Historic Review could make a determination?
Yes. So, in, under the current process, there would be a development activities meeting that would be required. There would have to be at least 30 days from that development activities meeting between that and a Historic Review Commission.
So there wasn't, there wasn't an option for the community to say, we're not going to hold a meeting on this?
No, there isn't. Not, not under the current legislation, no.
What about in this current? Wait, not in the current legislation?
No, the current legislation would exempt those projects from a development activities meeting, so there would not be the requirement.
Yeah, I know they would exempt, but even the changes here, do all these meetings have to happen or can they, like, I don't know, have a, is there a process that they could set in place where they don't have to have the meeting if they don't want?
Yeah, not, not in the legislation. However, there is, well, there is one piece relative to the legislation that, that states around, you know, a potential waiver process. And, you know, the way that that's been discussed has been not something that we wanted to include in the legislation, but put in the policies that, you know, that are around the program where if, you know, both the applicant and the registered community organization, for example, you know, felt like there was not a need to hold a development activities meeting, that there would be with those, you know, kind of, with those, you know, kind of things written, put in writing, that there would be the opportunity to waive a development.
So there is an opportunity?
Yeah, in, in what we've changed, yes.
Okay.
But not under the current system.
Okay, yeah, because that's something I was thinking of as if, you know, they just wanted the project to move and they didn't want to hold it up. Okay. All right. And then the additions that I see, the historic nominations, the demo, these are all additions. So this, so for historic nominations, there would have to be a development activities meeting?
So there presently, there presently is in that what's, what struck out as number 12 is any application to the Historic Review Commission.
Okay.
So now that's everything.
It's defined.
So what we're doing is further defining what actually out of the items that do go to Historic Review Commission would require a development activities meeting. So that's those historic nominations. Demolition is obviously a very contentious issue in our historic districts, you know, for communities where we want to make sure that there's still the opportunity to, you know, to provide the necessary feedback in the process and have the necessary conversations with an applicant ahead of, you know, them going to a commission for a demolition, you know, or, you know, that, that limit to expansion for new structures or expansions.
Can you give me an example of 2,400 gross square feet with what a project that is?
I mean, that's, you know, in, for new construction, you know, it's the size of a moderate to larger single-family home. So if you're, I mean, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about, you know, that size or, you know, somebody looking to construct anything that would be a residential, you know, something residential.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that is for a single-family home. So if a single-family home is to be built, there's a meeting that's supposed to happen?
A development activities meeting, yes. You know.
One house?
In, in a historic, in a historic district, yes.
In a historic district, okay.
Only, you know, only in a, any city.
But prior to that, it was any?
Prior to that, it was any application that had to go through Historic Review also had to have a development activities meeting.
And then the design, the Civic Design Committee, what, what's an example of that?
Sure. So the Civic Design Committee handles things that are within the city's rights of way or our public spaces. So some examples of some items that have gone through that and would continue would be, you know, we put in electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. You know, that was an application that went to Civic Design Commission. There was public review on. You know, there were things like the city's present for art program, you know, which although obviously the intention is that we're having plenty of public process prior to that, you know, to have kind of a formal place for an RCO to be able to, to make a position statement, we felt like would continue to be important. You know, other kind of non-standard streetscape improvements would be another thing. So if they're doing something that's not a city standard, a lot of times that it's going to go through the Civic Design Committee.
So I had one meeting, this must be like close to three years ago, and it was for a development that didn't make any applications to the city for anything. They just, I think they just had a conversation with city planning. And we, there was a, a development activities meeting based on that. Or I don't know, sure, maybe it was just a meeting. I don't know sure where they, but it was like a very big to-do because it was a project that would be several townhomes behind people's homes, and they were. But there was never an application or any sort of, any sort of official, you know, application with the city. Was that supposed to happen?
I mean.
City, city planning was, like, they organized that meeting. They organized, they told the, basically the community group that they should have a meeting about this.
So, I mean.
And it never happened. Like, it started the whole community up and it never.
So this is, this is kind of documenting where there's formal require. I mean, just not being familiar with the situation that you're saying, I'll speak a little bit more generally. This is what formally, you know, we're saying has to happen as far as development activities meetings. We have pre-application meeting, what are called pre-application meetings many times with applicants or developers who are looking to develop in the city. And we do almost exclusively tell them as a part of those meetings to be meeting with city council members, to be meeting with community groups that are in the area kind of as they're developing their proposal. So, you know, it could be that, that that was, that was something like that that was in the process, but, you know, it's not part of the formal, like, you have to do it process. But we do definitely want to encourage outside of this, community engagement and resident engagement and city council engagement, you know, for people that are looking to do projects in the city.
Yeah, it was just, I don't think people really understood that, that it was just a, maybe it was a pre-application meeting.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we, again, you know.
But that would still be the case here, that if there's a pre-application meeting that they would.
That we would encourage, you know, we would encourage people to meet with community organizations and council.
But this legislation doesn't.
But they're under no requirement to do, just like there's no, there's no requirement to do so presently.
This legislation doesn't make it required?
It does not.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all. And I've been listening and before I got to the table to the discussion so far. And I'm grateful that I feel like it's the intent of council to let everybody digest this further. And I just wanted to recall that this RCO legislation didn't exist, the ordinance didn't exist before 2018, right, Director?
Yes.
And so maybe if you could kind of, and I was trying to reflect on kind of like, what, what problem are we trying to solve? And, you know, why did we create this ordinance to begin with? And I just want to remind people because I've had some, some odd inquiries that I think don't, aren't really actually relevant. Like, it, it wouldn't, it doesn't dissolve your organization, right? So an example, in my district, the Highland Park Community Council formed in 1945. That's 80 years ago, right? And, and after we created the ordinance in 2018, they did apply and become a registered community organization. But they were a community organization long before this RCO ordinance. And then in my district, I have a combination of some, I have definitely a community organization for every neighborhood, if not at least one. And I have, I have community organizations that are very, very active in development and held developer meetings before, you know, public meetings. And I think even kind of sent some of the template, right, for doing this, like, how do we make sure any proposed development has, you know, the neighbors understand what's happening, have the developers do an entire show, even businesses like bars? And they're not an RCO still. And so, remind us why, why we created this ordinance?
Sure. So the registered community organization program was initially created, you know, to do a few things. It was, you know, created to give, you know, residents kind of, you know, more of a consistent voice in the development review process. So, you know, what would happen many times is that, you know, we would go to a board or, we would have a board or commission meeting where residents would say, or organizations would stand up and say that they were not engaged. Applicants or developers would say, oh, we engaged this group or these people, or we engaged them and then, or we engaged them last week or the day before. And communities would say, well, we haven't had time to process, you know, this. And ultimately, it meant that the Planning Commission or the Zoning Board had to be like the arbiters of public process, you know, which was really outside of their role, number one. But number two, created a lot of confusion for, I think, everyone involved in the process, whether that was applicants having the uncertainty of, you know, what their process would be or whether it was residents, you know, kind of, you know, when a board or commission would make a determination that there's been enough public process for them to be able to move forward or that there hasn't. You know, and so, you know, we, you know, around the development review process, it really was to try to, you know, try to create some clarity on rules of engagement, create some timelines around that, make sure that, you know, community organizations, you know, had the opportunity to hear about a project prior to it going to a board or commission, to have the necessary, you know, to have the necessary forum to be able to talk to an applicant or a developer, you know, outside of, you know, them coming, you know, specifically for a decision, you know, and, and create some, and create some guidelines around that. It was also created because, you know, at the time, we were working on, you know, It was also created because, you know, at the time, we were working on, you know, under the previous mayoral administration on the development of neighborhood plans, and, you know, a formal adoption process for neighborhood plans. And so, you know, being able to have, you know, some, you know, kind of ways that community organizations could participate or even lead neighborhood planning, you know, in their communities, you know, we wanted to be able to set a process up for them to be able to do so. And so we wanted, and we wanted to try to answer without being too prescriptive as to, like, you know, what, you know, like, what is a community organization, or what are the basic things that a community organization needs to try to, you know, to be representative or, you know, to attempt to be representative of the geographic boundaries that it serves. And so that was where, you know, there were the standards that were placed in the initial ordinance, you know, relative to, and I think some members, you know, or some people testified relative to, which was, you know, how do they, you know, like, making sure that they have bylaws, making sure that they have a geographic boundary that is clear, because many times we, you know, have people coming to, to claim to represent an organization that, you know, people then are coming back and saying, oh, well, you've never done anything in our portion of the community before, why are you saying it now? And they had nothing kind of backing them up to say that they really represented an area. So, you know, it was really to try to put some of those standards in place as well, again, to try to provide as much of that clarity as we could. You know, I think, as I stated, when I first came up, you know, I think we've, we recognize that although there are definitely successes to that, and when we did the survey, there were a lot of the people that, you know, that participated in that survey that did feel very favorable about the RCO program as, you know, as a broad concept, that there are things that needed to continue to be fixed to make it better. And so, you know, I think that's what we're, that's what we're trying to bring forward.
Thank you, and I'll also, again, so you mentioned development review, which is reacting, I'll just put it in my own words, reacting to, these days mostly a private developer wanting to do something, right? So there's been a, you know, someone's bought property, created a proposal, and then the neighborhood is in a reaction position. You also mentioned that neighborhood plans, which we're not currently doing, I would consider that a more proactive role.
Right.
Right? So looking to, without, when, when, without an external threat or what have you, looking forward to seeing what, what is the consensus in the neighborhood about what we want here? Which is not only new construction, right? Sometimes that's about traffic safety, sometimes that's about small businesses, sometimes that's about community assets like schools or playgrounds. So planning is a more proactive position. And then thirdly, the clarification, the neighborhood bound, geographic boundary is one way of saying it, but you also said like, wait, they don't, they don't belong, those people have never been here before and they're trying to speak formally for us, so it's really about like who, what is representation, right? So that's a, that's a bigger, and thornier problem to solve. So I just wanted to kind of like remind us, like, what were the problems that we're trying to solve in this ordinance? And I'm not clear, you know, I don't think we have clarity about how we feel about this set of language in front of us in that role. Also, just kind of again, back up, high-level reminder that before 2018, that you could count the major developments in the city and where they were, and they were very concentrated. They were not distributed, right? And there has really been a very steep increase in the amount of small, medium, and large developments, honestly, right? So in 2013, you know, there weren't even a lot of small and medium infill developments happening anywhere, right? I mean, there was literally just, you could count building permits, and it was, it's a dramatic difference. So I think that's another problem, the volume. The volume and the, you know, the, that there's more development happening and in more places, and that some of the places don't already have a, like, a existing communications and consensus network on the ground, whether that's in a formal 501(c)(3) or not, or whether that's in an RCO or not. So it's, it's more difficult to get that development review thing, which I'll, I'll say, like, you emphasize the dissemination of information, but the ordinance also actually gives legal standing for, like, intervening in variances and, and ZBA, does it not, to RCOs?
It, I mean, it, they have, they have, they do have standing, you know, because they've, because they've provided kind of the information that shows that they are, you know, kind of able to represent, and we've recognized them to, you know, be a representative of, you know, a particular area.
When I say legal standing, I mean that their testimony would be accepted at, at a zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
Right? And that was a problem before, when people would show up and say, I'm impacted by this, and be like, ooh, technically, you're not in a couple of hundred feet, and so, no, we're not accepting your testimony and not considering it in our decision, right?
Right.
So, so that, that had to be negotiated too, but again, I still put that in the kind of reactive, reactive position. So, thank you, I'm not going to speak to the exact language, since we're like, literally have it in front of us and we're trying to read it, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood still kind of like where we're coming from and where we're at and what is, what is the problem that we're trying to, to solve. Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick.
I just, as a general note, and this is maybe to all departments, and, and I think, and I know that things have been a little, you know, wild politically, up and down, and lots have been going on, but, you know, when I first came to council, if I recall, and I know that there was some sort of concerns around this as well in, in the media, but, you know, I, I really found that briefings, whether we could go or our staff could go on, on large scale, things like that were helpful, right? That you could just go and, you know, just get sort of a, a baseline check-in on what was coming, give any initial thoughts, feedback before, you know, everything hit the table. Again, I know that there were some concerns in the media about, about the, the concept of the briefing, but as a, just from a professional, functional standpoint, they, they did feel and, and still do feel helpful, right, to just have that opportunity to sit and, and get, I mean, not obviously on every single thing, but, you know, on, on large scale things like this that are clearly going to make an impact, and, and, and that we are clearly going to get a lot of concerns about, it's, it's helpful to kind of know what you're going into before we're here at the table. That's all for me, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I'm going to make the motion to hold for four weeks, but I do want to say real quickly, I want to thank you for your work on this too. I know I gave you a hard time, and I'm going to continue until I leave, maybe even after I come, well, I'll come back, three minutes, public comment twice a week. But anyway, but I, I do want to thank you for, and I think that you're very professional in the way you've handled it. I wish everyone had done that throughout this process. But I, I think that what we really need is a meeting, not with ourselves and not with planning, but we need a meeting with the RCOs to sit down and have a discussion about how we can make these better for everyone, because what works in the East End doesn't always work in the West End, what works in the South Hills doesn't work in the North Hills, North Side. So I think it's, it would be better if we had everyone, and maybe a public meeting, and I'm happy to work with Council President Lavelle to schedule something like that, so that we can have some real dialogue, and, and hopefully city planning would be open to that as well. And Councilman Wilson, because you chair that committee, correct?
I said maybe.
You chair the Land. I'll be glad to work with you too, is what I'm saying. But, and, and all the members, to make sure that we're having a, a public conversation that, and, and people understand, because there's, I think people from the community need to be engaged in this as well. So I think they should be able to come to the table. If they have concerns with their RCOs, they should be able to say what it is. And so then maybe we can address that issue better. This was brought up back when Bill Paduto, you know, was in office, and I'm going to be honest, I, I wasn't crazy about it back then, I don't, I don't know if I voted for it, I think I was voting against it, and I think Reverend Burgess talked me into it at the table, because he said it's going to pass, my administration wants it, my office will vote for it. But to be truthful, I, I just never, I never found value in it, because I think, I hate when we have certain groups that just get information and everybody else is, you know, at their mercy. They are not elected to represent the areas, and I think council needs to have a little bit more hands-on in that area. But I do want to say that there are some RCOs that do an amazing job, amazing work. And, you know, Blake in Councilman Colquitt's office came in yesterday to give me some feedback and some suggestions. He said he was putting on his RCO hat, not his council, but anyway, but he was helping. But, so I do know that there's good RCOs, I do know that there are great things happening and great things people are doing, and they, most of them are, a lot of them are volunteers. And the ones that are volunteers are the ones I respect the most because they're putting time in and, you know, just really dedicating a lot to making the community better, so I appreciate that. But that doesn't mean that everybody shouldn't have a part of the conversation. So I'm going to make a motion to hold for four weeks, and within that time, I, I would like to schedule a, we'll schedule a public, a public meeting, not a hearing, but a meeting where we can actually have a dialogue.
Thank you. Before you do, I believe Councilperson Charlin has had his hand up online for quite a while, and I just missed it, so can we just?
Good, keep it up.
That was my, that was my fault for not saying it.
So I, I just, I, I wanted to be brief here, but I, I know that, you know, we're going to discuss pending later today in the public hearing, and I, I would just ask that we have the same level of engagement, of engagement with council members that we have with the pending legislation. We've had a briefing, we've had individual meetings, we're having a public hearing, and to me, it seems like, like scare tactics are being used, the RCOs, that all of them are reaching out to us saying, please protect us. You know, I've, I've had RCOs kind of all throughout my district reach out to me of like, what are you going to do, what if you're disbanding us? And I'm like, I, I'm in the dark here, I, I really don't know what's going on. The most information I've had on this legislation has been from, you know, Council, Council President Lavelle's comments from Standing Committee a couple of weeks ago. I, you know, I, I really don't appreciate being kept in the dark here from the Department of City Planning and the scare tactics that are used on this, and I do hope that you actually engage with council members moving forward on something as significant as this. That, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. So I believe the, the proposed motion.
Motion to hold for four weeks.
Four weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2109 for four weeks, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
That moves us on to new papers. Bill 2357.
Resolution transferring the amount of $2,000 within the 2025 operating budget from city council salaries and wages regular to the office of the city clerk for the purpose of professional services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2357, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices, is there a motion on invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards, is there a motion on P cards? I'm sorry, that moves us on to interdepartmental transfers first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of transfers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Interdepartmental transfers are approved. That moves us on to P cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Supplemental new paper, Bill 2384. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Duquesne Light Company LLC for consolidated payment of any and all account billing obligations in arrears on city help meters and then not to exceed amount of $204,750 and 33 cents over a period of one year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I would like someone to come to the table, explain it.
Councilwoman Kail Smith. Please come to the table, thank you. If you weren't going to do it, I was, so.
You were going to.
I'm looking forward to hearing.
I saw your face, I'm thinking she must want me to call.
Yeah, no, I think it's an opportunity to brag, but I'll just say that.
Chris Horstein, Director of Public Works.
Don Mudrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Works.
Could you give us a little synopsis with this session?
Sure. I am probably 10 times more excited than Councilwoman Schausberger. No, this is a culmination of a year's work. We've actually audited every single account meter with Duquesne Light. We came up with over 1,098 meters belonging to the city. They were over, and that's just the metered ones, and we have another thousand plus when you factor in streetlights and on and on. So we've been working with Duquesne Light very closely, we audited our complete electric meter system, we've managed to get it down from 80 individual, like buckets or account buckets down to eight. So we're lessening transactions, we're doing all, all that is to bring our accounts to zero, so that we can then function and move the payment system to the P card system, and then paying utilities through the P card system enables us to.
I don't know about this.
Wait, wait, wait. It actually enables us to be a part of the refund system of using the P cards, so we'll actually receive money back on our utility spend using the P cards.
I'm going to turn it over to one of you.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you for that. I don't think anyone has ever told us that we have 1,098 meters, I assume we didn't know that.
Right.
Okay, so we didn't know how many meters we had.
Yeah.
Did Duquesne Light know how many meters we had?
Yes, but.
They didn't tell us?
Well, in, it was that in times past, there was no standard work around utility management for probably almost eight years, if you remember the name Jim Sloss, he was the last person on staff, yes, to actually manage the utility program. And so, working with planning, that's why we've been here coming about our procurement, right, and, and taking our procurement out to market and being able to control costs that way and, and, you know, scale up WEPIC, which is the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium, which is, enables us to go as a region, right, out to the market and buy our, procure our energy as a, as a whole, scale up even larger.
So because we wanted to enter in this consortium and to, you know, benefit from cost sharing.
Yes.
We then had to, to, I assume, tell the consortium.
That was part of it.
Right, okay.
Part of it was just me being the type person that was going to audit it anyway.
Diligent?
Yes.
I think it's a word, thank you for being.
I was going to audit it anyway, so, you know, and it turned out to be extremely beneficial. There was a staff of, you know, there's lots of people in this project, there's interns, they actually went and Google, looked up every single meter on Google Earth.
Looked at it.
Looked at it. This leads to so many more things, right? Like, well, you know, in the future, we're going to have a, hopefully have a conversation about addressing parks. This led us to understand that we really need addresses in our parks, you know, just roll off onto things like that. What this does is, so, what we're also able to do is look at how Duquesne Light has categorized our buildings, because some of our, our distributor fee is kind of based on the usage of the building and the type of building it is, and size and commercial and stuff like that. So we were able to go and look at that. And quite honestly, because of our procurement, the way we do it and going out to market, we have a supplier agreement with Direct Energy. But we are also finding out, and it's perfectly unfortunately legal, that like, the third-party folks, like Green Mountain or whatever, green energy folks that call you and say, we can make your electric cheaper, well, they were calling throughout the facilities saying that, and some of them were getting switched over. So we had some, like, you know, some of that stuff going on.
Chaos, some chaos.
A little bit of chaos.
All right.
So anyhow, we got it under control. The example I'd like to give is the, the, the staff member that's currently doing our utility bill payment opens over 300 envelopes a month. Opens it up, brings out the invoice, spreads it out, scans it, all that stuff. When you add that up, that's two days a month just opening envelopes.
You know, this is probably why some municipalities around the country have their own power generation.
Yeah. But anyway, it's. Yeah. But anyway, it's all a long story short. We'll get, you know, I'm happy to go deeper and, you know, offline. But it's just a very exciting time for us in planning with Flor and Matt Mahoney and my team and us in DPW really taking control of this holistically and coming forward. And we were kind of very excited about the P card option because, you know, our utility spend is substantial, right? So we're now eligible for that rebate on that 11 to 15 million we spend by switching it over to P card.
Explain the rebate more. I don't think we understand the rebate.
That's an L and B question. To be honest with you, I just know that the P card system, almost like Discover where you get like 3% cash back, we get something back using the P cards, as I understand it. But that's an L and B discussion.
So tell me about the consortium. I assume council approved the consortium, and I just don't remember us doing it. And it probably would have been a long time ago.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years. Yeah. Flor Marion was tremendous in leading that effort. So it's the Western Pennsylvania Energy Consortium. I believe the county is still in it. It's the zoo, it's us, some other organizations. And then when we came to you for the N L, like for instance, we'll come to you right now, this contract to be our energy broker is actually in RFP, and we're reviewing those now. And whoever wins that contract will go out and procure on behalf of all of us. But the city drives that contract on behalf of WEPIC.
And we believe that we'll get a lower rate.
Yes.
Than our 1,098 meters are currently being variously charged.
Right.
Because they're not all paying the same rate.
Correct. Well, right. Varyously, well, let's step back and say there are three fees, three fees involved, right? So we have the fee of our broker and then the fee of the supplier. So the energy is produced somewhere in the ethos, right, and it's sent to the supplier. That's what we negotiate. That's locked. That energy then goes to the distributor, which is Duquesne Light. They tack on a distributor fee. That's flexible. That's not locked, right? That's based on Duquesne Light and their current fees and whatnot. Because we are just a customer. You know, Duquesne Light is a great partner, but we are a customer. We call 800 customer service. Well, not anymore, thank goodness, but we did call customer service, just like everybody else. And it's legal for them to shut off police stations if something happens. And, you know, so it's a lot of, you know.
It is.
Bridging that gap.
Okay, so we believe that of the three kinds of fees that were paid, the energy supplier fee is kind of fixed, but the other two may go down. Or get us, both were paying more fees, but then we're also paying lower rates.
Yes.
Because the broker will be able to get us lower rates with the energy distributor and doing the bulk purchase.
And it also enabled us, a couple of years ago, we were excited coming to you because we were able to diversify the portfolio a little bit and trade in some of our standard dirty energy credits for a wind farm in Ohio, right? So now our portfolio is actually diversified. And that enables us to do that by going out with this procurement broker system.
So greener and cost savings.
Yeah.
But first, somehow in auditing the 1,098 meters, there's a 204,000 or almost 205,000 dollar gap or payment or something.
Yes. So prior to invoices, because again, 300 invoices, some of them were going all over the city. They weren't just coming to my office either. Some were going to parks, directly to parks, or some were going directly to public safety facilities or this or that. So of course, you know, because we're a customer, Duquesne Light automatically taxes on their late fee if we're late. But we're a pretty big bureaucracy and we're, you know, 300 invoices a month just in utilities equals 5,000 transactions a year, right? So some of them were late. So this is years of building up late fees and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And I wasn't, I guess I'll say it this way, I wasn't willing to entertain the P card route, because it was my idea, but we had to be at zero. And so that's why this is a settlement and negotiation with Duquesne Light was, and they were fantastic with it. They've been, they've been a fantastic partner every step, was we need to get all of our accounts to zero. So all 1,000 now, instead of having little late fees here or there, they're all at zero. So what we pay on the P card when we start that system will just be current amounts, which is tremendous. And this also enables, sorry, this is a very kind of, you know, it's a complex issue, believe it or not, because it actually dominoes across. Like with the storm, for instance, we didn't, you know, some of our workers, we had, this system will also enable us to actually say where the meters are in the buildings and allow our people to actually, instead of spending time trying to run around and figure where the meter is, they'll be able to go to our system and actually see it. We created an in-house kind of tracking system that will automatically, through like an AI spider type of system, will read the invoices and automatically download the KPIs, the usage, the kilowatts, so that we can actually start tracking better, and we can actually start forecasting better, and we can actually start budgeting better, right? Because utilities, we have to pay them, right? There is no ifs, ands, or buts. But we also don't have a budget account, right? It's not like, you know, residents are on a budget account, they know they're going to pay.
I have a different question. Is the spider internal or external?
Internal. It is not attached to any type of jet, PTT.
So IMP did the programming?
No, actually, my team and I did.
Amazing. Okay. Good to know. All right. So I don't want to go down a whole rabbit hole here.
With their lesson, but yes, yeah.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, it's well within AI, you know, parameters.
Okay. I think I have a much better understanding, and I just will close by saying 10 years ago, maybe 12 years ago now, like paper streets were like written on a piece of paper. When I asked for them, I got somebody's like cursive handwriting of a list of streets, and that was the official list. We didn't really have track of what our treasurer sale properties were. We didn't know what properties. We didn't really have a good inventory of city facilities. And now we just keep, I think, coming up to, you know, a better management. I don't even know a better way of saying that. I mean, it's just like, we're literally just managing assets better. So I appreciate it. So I'm definitely supportive, and I appreciate the really comprehensive description here because this is, this was all new to me. So I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Donnie, thank you. You know, your wealth of knowledge, you really are. It is sounding very complex. It sounds like you almost initiated the entire revamping of it on your own, to some degree.
Some degree, yeah.
Right, right. So I guess the only question, Councilwoman Gross pretty much asked every question or anything I had, you know. But the 204,000, has that just late fees then?
It's a mixture of mostly late fees or sometimes there are, PUC taxes are listed as a tax, so sometimes it's taken off because we don't pay taxes, but we do pay the PUC taxes, so that'd be put back on and that type of stuff, yeah.
Okay, so we're to pay that off.
Yes.
Immediately. That way we could start using the P cards in order to get the rebate.
That's the goal.
Rebate. We're going to get a rebate.
Yeah.
We don't know the percentage or what that might mean.
Yeah, that's an L and B question. I just.
Okay, so that'll be dictated.
I just confirm, I made sure before we even went down this road that the rebate was possible because just paying them with a P card is not.
Well, yeah, right.
Worth it unless there's.
Right, right.
Worth it.
And that 204,000, we knew we owed that, or did they bring that to our attention in order for us just to pay by P card?
Well, we always, there was some, there's always discussion back and forth on whether or not we are responsible for the late fees, right? You know, depending, sometimes the guidance is no, we don't pay late fees, and sometimes the guidance is we have to pay.
And I don't expect you to know this, you know, but we, I can imagine we've got to be, Duquesne Light's one of their biggest customers in the region.
Shh. I tell them we are. I maybe act like we are, but I don't know that for sure.
It's got to be pretty safe. Yeah, as our biggest customer. I wish they would waive the little, the late fees that we're unsure of whether we.
Well, this is a settlement, so it's.
It's a settlement. This is like, we all sat down.
Yeah.
In good faith.
Yeah, because I mean, it's been eight years since.
Were they asking for more than 204, or was that just something we all came to agreement with?
It's something we all came to agreement with.
Okay, okay. All right, now, good.
Sorry?
Were they PUC fines or what were they paying?
No, 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 no. It's just.
Late fees.
It's literally late, basically late fees. I just, I wasn't.
Like you said, when we're 5,000 basically bills a year.
Yeah.
You miss one or two, one's late.
Yeah. Because what would hap, the weeds is, what would happen is when Katia, who does the work, opens up the envelope and pulls out the invoice. She does an initial quality control check, and if she sees that late fee, she has to literally just scratch it out and rewrite the new amount and then send it down.
I love the idea of zeroing out and not having, by doing, by P card.
Yeah.
We won't incur any late fees then.
No.
Yeah, so.
No guarantees against that and puts, you know, hopefully a little bit back into the general fund.
Okay, good job. Thanks.
Thanks.
Further discussions? Seeing none.
Thank you for your work.
All those in favor of Bill 2384, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, folks.
No, new papers, Bill 2347.
Resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the McCardle roadway reconstruction project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,200,000 reimbursable at 80% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs at a cost to the city of Pittsburgh not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross is going to time me. Hey, when you're this age, you don't like seeing a timer going before you.
That's right.
Hi, I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself for the public?
Yes, Eric Seppeler, I'm the chief engineer in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Thank you. And so excited about this. So could you talk a little bit about it? Because I just want to say this is something that the community's been working on. But I have been working on this with the city of Pittsburgh, GPW, then DOMI for years. And so now we finally have, we're at a place where we can get something done. But I think the community, now they want to know, because the draft's coming, there's a group of people working on stuff. And I keep assuring them that we are working on things. So could you talk a little bit about what you're doing?
Yes. And as you alluded to, Mount Washington, McCardle roadway in particular has been a focus for a while. You know, several years back, you helped get some local funding. You may be aware, you know, we have projects for the bridges on McCardle roadway. There's two bridges on the upper section, you know, going uphill from the Liberty Tunnel. We secured federal and state funding for those, and those are working through kind of the agreement process. And so that's great. That's been, that's been moving in the, in the planning phase. And really, this year, you know, we were working on trying to make some repairs to some of the retaining walls with the money, the local money that we had. And really just looking at the scope, you know how long the Cardle roadway is, you know how many issues there are. We felt it was really, we needed more. We needed a bigger project, more federal funding. So we have been able to get a new project listed on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Program. This is in addition to the two bridge preservation projects that are already there. We now have a project listed for roadway reconstruction, basically from the entire upper section, from Liberty Tunnel to the top of the hill.
To Grandview.
What'd you say?
To Grandview, correct?
Yes, to Grandview. So this is, this is just at the very beginning phases of this. We are trying to get a reimbursement agreement together with PennDOTs so that we can start the process. And of course, with all these federal processes, these federal projects, it's going to take several years. But it is, it's exciting. This is the first time that we have, you know, we now have a funding source to do more comprehensive work on McCardle roadway, which is needed.
And will it include the fencing or the railing that are going down? Because it looks really bad.
Yes, yes. That will be included. What we do exactly is to be determined, but we'll definitely include that.
So now there's, there's a group that's working, and they want to have it done by the draft. They want to have some of it done. Now, they just want to at least do the railing and just do some beautification. They said, just to make it look presentable for the draft. Do you know anything about that or what that would need?
Um.
Or will you be doing some of that work?
So none of this, this money certainly is not on a timeframe to be used before the draft.
Okay.
This is more of a long-term, large-scale project. I haven't been involved in any discussions yet, but.
So I'm going to schedule a meeting with them, and would it be you then? I would?
Yeah. I think, you know, me from DOMI, I think including Public Works would be, would make sense also. Because if we're talking quick things, you know, we may need some in-house capabilities versus trying to contrast.
They want to do some things. There's a group of people, they're willing to pay for it and to do some stuff. So they just want to have a conversation about what needs done and what they want to see done, and can it be done before the draft, some of it. So I just don't want them doing something, and then you're doing something, and, you know, they're working, you're working against one another instead of collaborating. So I did tell them I'd schedule a meeting because I think they need to go through, through all of you.
Okay.
But I do want to thank you, Director Scalacan, and I do want to thank Mayor Gagnon and his office, because this has been a project, we have been working on this for years. And every time we turn around, and Director Hornstein, every time we turn around, there's, you know, another issue and another project. And so, or some, another obstacle that we, that we, you know, run into. So I want to thank everyone for their help on this and getting it done because it's so important to the residents. I'm coming back. I don't care when it's finished. I'm coming back.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2347, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That moves us on to Bill 2348.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a maintenance agreement with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for the Pittsburgh Pedestrian Wayfinding Project at no cost to the city.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Is there anyone here to talk about the bill?
So there has been a project which has recently, construction I believe is complete now, to install some wayfinding signage and several larger kiosks, mostly through downtown. A couple, I believe, are up in the Oakland area and possibly across the river as well. So this was done in partnership. I mean, DOMI was involved because we were kind of receiving the money because there was, you know, state and federal money involved. But the PDP was a big partner in this, and they are going to be the ones to maintain these going forward. So this is a maintenance agreement to memorialize that they'll be responsible for these signs and kiosks.
So that's the, that's for the PDP to maintain them?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This kiosk and the signs, are they digital or are they?
No, just analog. Just fixed signage.
And they're, and they obviously have not begun putting erecting them.
No, a lot of them are.
Oh, they are? Okay.
So many of that, so there are some slightly larger, you know, structures, kiosks, they're kind of a black color scheme. And there's a lot of just signs. All over downtown, you'll see them, and they kind of give walking distance, like approximate times to walk to various locations with directions pointing around.
Yeah, like maps. US, yeah, say the Warhol Museum.
Right, go that way.
1.2 miles. Hey, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I haven't seen them yet, but I look forward to seeing them. So, okay, that was it. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 2348, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 2349.
Bill 2349. Resolution authorizing the taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in the 20th Ward. for public roadway purposes certain property in the 20th ward of the city owned by John and Gail Eltoner, located along Herndon Street, and authorizing the payment of just compensation unnecessary. Incidental acquisition costs related thereto amount not to exceed $6,000.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, second with discussion, thank you.
Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you, just briefly, this is Herndon Street and Elliot, and this is another project people have been waiting for years. So could you just briefly, it's a property you're purchasing?
Yes, yes, so as you mentioned, this is a landslide repair. We're going to construct a retaining wall to stabilize and reconstruct Herndon Streets. We needed, there were two property impacts. I think we were actually just here last week with a TCE for a different property. This one, unfortunately, I believe that the property owners are deceased, and I think the heirs were, you know, for whatever reason, kind of not interested in taking the parcel on because, you know, it's, it's on a hillside and whatever. So anyway, essentially, we had to go through a taking to just purchase the property from the estate. The price is there, and then that will allow us to complete the project.
But I just want to say that there's a, a lot of people on that street that are going to be thrilled when this street is completed because they've been waiting for years, same, and I do want to thank DOMI and DPW for all the years. Our district has the most slope remediation issues, and you're constantly trying to piecemeal and put things together. So I want to thank you for the work, you know, all of you for the work that you've been doing in our district for all these years. Because I know it's always one, one emergency after another. You think it's going to slide here, and it slides over there. So I just want to thank you for all the work and helping to keep people in their homes. Because Elliot, you know, also has a lot of, you know, landslides. And if you see, when you come around the West End Circle, and if you look up, you'll see usually a Christmas tree or a flagpole, that's Kelly Frye's house. And there's a lot of landslides around that as well. And I mean, it's a beautiful view, you know, everything's great about it. But I'm worried about making sure we're stabilizing the hillside all around there, so that's part of this, this is part of that area.
It is, right. And this is the last, the last piece of the puzzle, if you will. The design is done. So once we have this, we'll be able to put it out to construction, and it'll happen next year.
Okay, great. And thank you again. Thank you to everyone for the hard work. Thank you.
Yeah, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2349, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on, thank you for joining us. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Charlan.
Bill 2359, ordinance amending supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Chapter 651, Findings and Policy 653, Human Relations Commission and Chapter 659, unlawful civil rights practices by simplifying language to offer clarity defining terms specific to the enforcement of anti-discrimination provisions within the city code and preserving the anti-discrimination enforcement power of the city in the wake of federal changes.
Motion approved with discussion.
Second.
With discussion, Councilperson Charlan.
And I would like to defer to the bill sponsor.
Thank you. I'd like to call the representatives from the Commission on Human Relations up to join us at the table.
Good morning. Please feel free to introduce yourselves, and, and then I'll ask you a few questions. Sure. Rachel Shepard, the Executive Director for the Commission on Human Relations.
Christopher Salt, I'm the Deputy Director.
Tiara Collins, Representative Board Member, just here for support.
Thank you. So I, I think either of us could give the overview of what this is aiming to accomplish because it's, there are small changes with big impact. But I'd like to turn it over to you to make that, Ms. Shepard, to make that, give that summary, and then we can answer some questions.
Sure. So as you all know, we're the Civil Rights Enforcement Agency for the city of Pittsburgh. That's both the city code, so 651 through 659 of the city code, and we are substantially equivalent for federal anti-discrimination laws in both employment and housing. So we're working to update the code. These are actually a lot of the amendments that we've been holding on to since 2021, and we just haven't been able to get them quite finished, to get them to counsel. But after working with our solicitor, this is the, the bright time for us. Particularly because of the impact of the federal government, particularly the executive orders that are now changing the priorities of those federal agencies that we have substantial equivalency with. So we're looking to simplify our language. We want to reduce the administrative burden for the commission and for everyone. For as we're adding protections under the city code, we want to have a simple paragraph at the beginning of each section for the employment, housing, public accommodations, civil rights, so that it's clear which protected statuses apply to that code without having it in every single paragraph, because that's a lot of editing and work on, on our part to get that legislation in. We're adding definitions. So Section 651, 653, we've got definitions on what our code is all about. And a lot of these terms that we're adding here are, you know, for protected class. Everyone at this table knows what a protected class is, but some people do not. And it's being debated by some of the respondents that we see, just what a protected status actually is, whether it's equating to a federal protection or if it's just a local protection. And we want to make sure that we are defining that clearly in the code. The other piece of those definitions is adding disparate impact. It's currently implied in our code that we can take disparate impact cases, and that is when, you know, one of the folks that we see, an employer, a housing provider, has a policy that is seemingly neutral. It doesn't have anything blatantly discriminatory in it, but it does have a discriminatory impact on a group of people. And we don't see that very often. It does involve very much larger systemic issues. But the kind of things that we see are, are like familial status in housing, where it'll have like a no-kids policy. Or with a lease saying like no 911 calls, and someone's experiencing domestic violence, and it has a disparate impact on them. So we want to preserve that right. The federal government has, through its executive orders, explicitly called out the ability of the federal agencies to investigate disparate impact cases. And they've started dismissing cases, if anyone has seen HUD dismiss certain cases. And the EEOC is doing the same thing. So we're talking large impact, one case. Lots of work put into it, and they're, they're dismissing those cases. So again, looking to preserve that in the city code because we don't currently have it explicitly outlined, and now we will. We want to preserve our enforcement power. We're the agency for the city of Pittsburgh. We all see the federal changes, and we don't know where, what's going to happen next. Frankly, every week it's something new for our office, and we're doing our best to comply and to, to follow suit with what's expected of us from our federal partners, but it's difficult. And ultimately, it's, it's meant to be a losing game. So we're, we want to be able to preserve Pittsburgh and our ability as an agency to continue with the law enforcement. Because agencies like ours are being disbanded across the country right now. They're being defunded. And we're lucky enough that we have a very supportive city that wants these protections for its people and sees the value of the commission in addressing these kinds of issues. So again, we want to preserve our abilities through these code updates. Specifically with regard to Section 659.07, that is the section that addresses the city and city staff liability under the city code. And we are looking to expand the umbrella of protections that exists in that space already because it hasn't been updated since 1996. And we have quite a few more local protections now than we did then. To clarify, this isn't adding anything because these are all cases that we've been able to take under other statuses. Like the sex status, we can currently take sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression cases under that. But we want to make it explicit. If somebody goes to look in the city code and see what's protected, they should be able to see that their status is protected there. And then the final move there with 65907 is just to remove some barriers that we've experienced with working simultaneously with the Office of Municipal Investigations. So we had a conversation with Manager Bruni about removing the language that's in that code, again, from the 90s when we were experiencing a very high number of police discrimination cases as well as, you know, police policy cases that would go to OMI. And there were provisions in there that would block a person from being able to file with both of us simultaneously, even though we're doing different sorts of investigations. So we're seeking to, to remove that barrier. We have a good working relationship with OMI, and we, we've been working on a memorandum of understanding for how we would do work sharing, or not, not necessarily work sharing, but like the sharing of information between us, depending on what kind of case it is. But that, that's the basis of anything. I don't know if you want to add anything, Chris? All right. Any questions?
Thank you. So like, as we heard, it's, it's, there's a lot that's happening here. But if you look at the actual changes that are being made, they're fairly small. The one that you, you would notice reading through is really an elimination of the listing of every single protected class everywhere that exists throughout the bill, and replacing it with the definitions, like where they fall within the definitions. So, you know, anytime that we want to amend our nondiscrimination code, this portion of the code, you make one change or add one protected class, and you have to like amend every single section where all of those classes are listed, and this just kind of streamlines it. But I think, I think the more important point here is that preserving the ability for our Commission on Human Relations to stay independent and protect protected classes and the civil rights of our protected classes, despite anything that might come out of the federal government. I'm looking at a memo right here from the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and it's basically saying, you know, the executive orders that are coming out de-prioritize enforcement of matters relying on disparate impact allegations. And we know that when it comes to the law and legal cases, discrimination thrives in gray area, right? The more gray area that exists, the more that they can exploit that. And for us to be explicit and crystal clear about what we are able to, who we are able to protect locally, it's just one more way of us saying, as a city of Pittsburgh, we, we've got you, we are protecting you. And if you fall within one of these classes and, or you identify as one of these protected classes, and you are trying to access, depending on what it is, we're talking about whether it's housing or public accommodations or employment, you cannot be discriminated against, full stop. So that's the intent here. But I'll stop talking. I'll, I'll let council members ask questions to the, to the commission representatives, and I know that Councilwoman Kale Smith had her hand up first.
Yeah, I, actually, I understand what you're trying to do, but my phone is, I'm getting a lot of messages from people asking questions that I don't really know the answer. So one of the things I'm hearing is that currently immigration isn't a protected status in 65902.02. And the change in it creates conflict. I'm afraid it's, it will create more conflict. And the others are that we're not the federal government, and what authority does this organization have over the federal government? None, basically. And so I, I just want to note, was, because for my own edification, was there, does the law department see this legislation?
In derogatory, we attempted for over six months to engage the law department and get a, an opinion. We decided to move forward without it because we engaged them, we attempted more than three times to get an opinion, and we not, did not receive one.
Well, we want to create more of a conflict than there already is.
But I can also say, sorry, to answer your question, there are, there is no creation of any new protected classes in this legislation, only a definition and a reiteration of what's already in there.
Okay, so I, I would like to, an opinion from the law department before I vote. That's all I'm going to say.
I would, I would like you to.
So I think we should, we'll request it, and maybe the next request will be to disband the law department. I don't know. But, but I do think that we need to have something. So we're making sure we're not adding to the chaos. That's what I want to make sure.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I just wanted, for the sake of the conversation, and also to educate the public, could you provide some examples of, you know, given the executive, I think we got one example from Madam Chair of, you know, the, you know, the potential differentiation of things that may not be protected based on executive orders that have already been called for, potentially executive orders to come over the next three-plus years of things, of, of, of things where protections are being taken away that still exist, you know, here in the city.
Yeah, so we're, we're talking about preserving protections like gender identity and expression because transgender status has been demonized by the administration, the federal administration since day one. And we've been directed by our federal partners now, as a part of our work sharing agreement, to no longer bother filing those types of cases because we won't get credit for them. So what our agency is now doing is bifurcating cases. If we have a case where it's a race basis, and there's also a gender identity and expression issue, we will have separate cases for those matters so that one would be filed, the race would be filed with our federal partner at the EEOC, and the other would be filed simply on, on the basis of the city code because we have to protect the individuals. We also have, basically, since we've, before, so when the original executive orders came out on January 20th, we started asking complainants, do you feel comfortable filing with the federal government? And we gave them the option, because the federal government filing does preserve their rights under the federal law that we are substantially equivalent to. It also gets them the ability to have a substantial weight review or some kind of review by the federal agency. But they felt essentially that they would be putting their name on a list and identifying themselves and outing themselves, and they would feel uncomfortable. So we've been giving people the option for sexual orientation, gender identity, expression, things like citizenship and immigration status and housing, whether they want to dual-file or not, before we got the explicit information that we now have to stick to avoiding transgender status, do not do disparate impact on the employment side. And then on the housing side, we are now being told that we have to abide by just what is in the Fair Housing Act explicitly, which means where we would have taken cases based on sex previously because of a domestic violence issue, and we have domestic violence here in the city of Pittsburgh as a protection for housing. We would have dual-fired that with the federal government, and they would have given them that, that protection and those, those provisions. But now it's, it has to be explicitly based on sex, not something that would have fallen under that umbrella. Which, again, goes back to the pieces that we're trying to add in 65907, is that it's, everything's an umbrella. National origin, we can take those cases for preferred language, citizenship and immigration status, place of birth, like we have all of these things under national origin. And we're, we're being pushed now to choose, do we, do we continue to follow the regulations that are being handed to us by the federal government and try to keep our contract as long as possible to keep that funding source and keep that support? Or do we go against them because we have these protections in the city of Pittsburgh, and we're here to protect those people and do what is right? So, like I said, we've been bifurcating cases. So we'll have, we'll have two simultaneous cases going at the same time on the same issue, but we would have to keep all of the information separate so that the federal government doesn't get offended that we took something on gender identity.
Interesting. And now, are all these cases held in federal venues, but, or are they also held in state venues and local venues as well?
We don't have authorization, we don't have substantial equivalency for the State Human Relations Act. So we only take the federal, like Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act, the ADA, Age Discrimination, Age Discrimination in Employment Act, and the Pregnant Worker Fairness Act. So we're equivalent to all of those, and that's what we can dual-file on. So not everything, but we do have some substantial equivalency.
That exhausts my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further discussion? So I wanted to address one of the questions that I think might have been the source of, one of Councilwoman Kale Smith's questions, which is, upon reading this, when you see the elimination of, of the certain classes throughout the code to then be defined up above at, at the definitions, you don't see all of them listed. So it might give the impression that we're adding new classes today. Can you address that? Like, for instance, citizenship and immigration status was added as a protected class in 2020, but it's not necessarily listed here in, when you read through some of the kind of rearranging of it. Can you address why some of them might not be here but would be added up above at the definitions?
Yeah, so not every protected status falls under each protected category. So for employment, we have the local protections of like the Crown Act, essentially. We have the domestic violence provision. We have the medical marijuana patients, and those are all specific things to employment that are not, well, so one of them is not in the other categories, but they're explicit to employment. So what we're proposing is putting that list at the top of the employment section, which would be 65902, so that all of those employment provisions would be related to just that list of protected statuses. And then anywhere else in the code where it would refer to those statuses. And then anywhere else in the code where it would refer to those statuses, it just says, "based on actual or perceived protected class identity or retaliation for engaging in a protected activity." And that was part of the reason we wanted to define those terms in the code so that when we're referring to them, it's giving them that baseline of, like, these are what the protected classes are, and then you can refer to that portion of the code to see which ones apply. And so, when we're changing things like 651 and 653 of the code, we're putting actual or perceived protected class status because that will then refer back to wherever it applies in that specific portion of the code, that is where you can look at that specific list. Likewise, in housing, we have housing status, so like that's, that's a protection that's only in housing, so it would be on that list but not on any of the others. So we wanted to make sure it was explicit dependent on what category you're filing under.
Thank you. So I'm, you know, I, I could take a motion to hold for a week if we wanted to try to get an opinion. I'd rather move forward and try to get the thoughts of the law department before next Tuesday and then recommit if necessary, but it's up to the body.
I'm okay just abstaining until I get something from the law for next week.
Okay. And we will work again to try to seek that clarification and have a meeting to discuss very specific points.
I don't want to hold anything up, I just want to...
Sure, 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 and try to get that before Tuesday so we can determine whether, you know, there's any risk that we're not, not aware of at this point. Thank you. Okay, so, all those in favor of Bill 2359, please indicate by saying aye.
Abstain.
One abstention, affirmative recommendation. Thank you all very much. We'll work to get clarification before Tuesday.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, can you make sure that you reach out to the law department?
Yes.
Thank you.
That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Supplemental new paper, Bill 2385, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code, Article V, use regulations, Chapter 911, primary uses, to add a definition for waste transfer station and standards associated with the use.
Motion to approve discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson.
I defer to the bill sponsor.
Yeah, thank you. So, this is, so, it is commonplace for municipalities to have parameters around where we handle municipal waste, right? And we do have some in our zoning use code around recycling, recycling centers, recycling, processing centers and such, but we do not have anything around municipal solid waste transfer stations, just sort of laying out where they can and should not go, right? So this, just to kind of, and this needs to be sent to the planning commission, so I, you know, I'm happy to...
Does it say not in district?
We can have, we can have a discussion now just about the bill, it's about, you know, about the parameters itself, which, by the way, I worked with the, our zoning team, which I much appreciate, always appreciate their help with this kind of thing. But just some sort of high level about location is that it, they should not be in our floodplains, right? Understandably, if there were a flood and, you know, and that they should not be within 500 feet of residential or commercial districts. Those are sort of the big, the big points. And then there's a number of other parameters around what the building should look like and, you know, and parks, yes, parks and open space. So, I feel like this should go to planning, I mean, but I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I'd also like to refer this to, motion to refer it to Planning Commission, so.
Second discussion on the, on the motion?
I think Councilwoman Willard will bring it up?
Yeah, Councilman Wilson. Well, so we, yeah, we're of a discussion on the motion.
Yes, is there some more information about this? Because this has been, we received information from a business in your district, you wrote A this yesterday, so it's, you know, I'm just trying to get up to speed as to what's happening here. We, we contract with a company that reached out to us, so there's a lot of information that I just don't have about what this means for services for Pittsburghers.
Right, so I can give the background for this, for sort of how this came to be. It's the same issue that came, that sort of brought the, the legislation I put forward to rezone the riverfront, which is the Hazelwood Riverfront from Riv GI to Riv Industrial Mixed Use. Of course, the Hazelwood community has a large industrial zone right next to it and one of the, one of the sites that has historically caused the most harm to the community in terms of noise, smell, and most specifically rodents, really awful rodent problem, is a recycling facility, has been there for a very, very, very long time. The recycling facility, our city recycling goes there, that facility is there, right? It exists. A number of years ago, back in 2018, 2019, the previous owners applied, and I will say very unfortunately, were granted a permit for, to convert this facility. I have to say, this is beyond me because even though at the time there were numerous health code violations, there was recycling material all over the place, rats, I mean, just so, at any rate, but I can't speak to that because I wasn't there, I wasn't part of the conversations at the time, but the previous owner in the existing facility was granted a state DEP permit to use the facility for municipal solid waste, as a municipal solid waste transfer station. So that would mean, instead of recycling, using it for raw garbage, to bring it there, to put it there, and then have it be transported. At any rate, that I feel was ill-advised, but at any rate, but one of the issues is, and I think perhaps, again, I can't speak for the state DEP, but I think perhaps some of the issue back then may have been that the city of Pittsburgh has no guidelines around where a facility of this type could go. And so, you know, it sort of sounds like, yeah...
I definitely agree with, I definitely agree with having, you know, official rules as to where, you know, in our code where things should be. So, in a meeting recently about this, I asked a question, you know, or no, it was actually brought up that it was, that there wasn't a real understanding on whether or not this zoning piece would mess with their, their certificate of occupancy? And so, my, so I recently received something from the administration saying today, this morning, that they feel confident it wouldn't, but I'm just really trying to understand this because, you know, we have some concern, we have a large concern from the company. We have a contract with them to do recycling.
Right.
You, this is...
And this is, and their current facility, yeah, their current facility, oh, sorry.
So, you know, can the, like, who is managing that contract? Is that, like, can they drop the contract if they're unhappy, if they get rezoned? Like, I just don't understand what the fallout could be if they're going to end the contract.
I don't, I have, I mean...
We have recycling needs picked up. I just, like I said, this is just a day. Maybe it's all good. Seems like we should hold it to understand more of the situation. It's the city services that we're talking about here.
So, just to clarify, they have a recycling center, a recycling processing center.
We have a contract with.
Right.
The company's called Republic, right?
Right.
Okay.
So, that is what the facility is now, right? Republic has said numerous times that, you know, someday down the road, maybe in many years, it could be, they could turn it into a municipal solid waste transfer station. My concern is that, given the harm, and again, this recycling center is where it is, it's not going anywhere, we can't, we can't rezone anything that would move it out. All that we can do now is hope that our partners at the Health Department continue to ensure that, you know, there are no health code violations in the current recycling center. However, I feel that it is not just for the Hazelwood neighborhood, but for any neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh, that we put some parameters around where we as a city would want a municipal, in other words, a location where garbage, raw, you know, raw municipal garbage is brought, put down, and left for a day, two days, whatnot, and then taken out again to go to a landfill where we would allow a facility of that type to exist in the city of Pittsburgh.
I don't disagree with you. I just feel that, what's the, what's the rush for a week so we can get a confirmation on whether or not, you know, what that contract talks about, like what's in the contract, and then also to get confirmation from, that this would continue to be an existing use of, you know, if we continue to want a contract with them, like, is this approved as existing use for them?
Well, there currently is a, Republic Services is currently working to get that, and I have discussed this extensively with the DEP, I feel that they gave, they should never have given that permit to this facility, not recently, this was the previous one.
I'm beyond what you're talking about, like, we're past, like, this solid waste stuff that you're talking about. I get it.
So, I'm not sure, are you afraid that Republic Services is going to threaten to take away the recycling contract with the city if we try and put a...
You're rezoning here. What's that? Oh, this isn't a zoning bill.
This is a citywide ordinance that would establish where in the city of Pittsburgh a municipal solid waste transfer station can go.
Yeah, this is a zoning bill.
Yes.
It's a zoning, yeah.
Yes.
If I might, I think there might be some confusion about, there's this bill and there's a separate bill.
There's a separate bill. There are two bills. One bill's already in the planning commission process. That is the one that rezones the Hazelwood Riverfront from Riv GI, Riverfront General Industrial to Riverfront Mixed Use Industrial. That's one bill.
Some months ago.
This bill is one that establishes where in the city of Pittsburgh, citywide, a municipal solid waste transfer station could go. And the parameters, again, this is, you know, worked with the zoning team, looking at other municipalities, et cetera. First of all, there are some parameters around the type of facility, like what it would look like having to be enclosed, et cetera, that it wouldn't be in a floodplain, and that it wouldn't be within 500 feet of residential or commercial zones, which I feel, that feels fairly straightforward and reasonable to me.
Yeah, I'm on the right bill.
And of course, it would, you know...
To actually have just some confirmation on, I mean, I realize the administration, I mean, it's a, it's an email from Director Pollock saying that he feels confident that the existing operation would not be affected.
Does not have an occupancy permit for municipal solid waste.
Sorry. I just wanted to state what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, so just, just to get confirmation on, like, you know, the truth of that, just to understand that that is correct, that the operation, the current operation wouldn't be affected by this legislation. So I think that would be PLI, it'd be good to get confirmation from them. And then, I guess for my own personal reasons, I'd like to see the contract to understand, like, how long that is, how long we still are in contract with them, and what the future holds for, you know, working with this company. Now, I don't disagree about, you know, what you're seeking to do. I just want to make sure that it does accomplish what you're trying to accomplish.
Anything else, Councilman? Any further discussion? Councilman Conklin?
Just a quick question. The Republic, I know you said they don't currently have permits or for, to store and transfer municipal waste there. Have they stressed that they would like to, or was this just good governance on your part? Or have they made a plea to you or the city?
Here's the dilemma, as I see it. And of course, none of this is in writing, so this is all just kind of, right? They have made clear that their intent in this facility is to use it, use it for municipal solid waste, however, they would make all these changes to the facility, et cetera, et cetera, and all the, right, like, all these things that they would do and invest all this money to make the facility, right, you know, so that this wouldn't cause the harm that, that, again, under prior ownership, that this facility as a recycling center has caused. However, somehow, the state DEP, given the facility as it is now, right, has, you know, the previous owner got this permit from the DEP to use this facility as it is now, so by recycle sources' own, like, analysis of the facility that they bought, it is not appropriate for municipal solid waste and that they're going to do all this stuff. However, they're about to get their perm, you see what I mean? So it's like, they've been permitted to handle waste in a facility that is totally unsuited to do that, and we as a city don't have any guidelines around how, where, what, you know, this type of facility, so that's what this bill does.
So the permit that the DEP is granting them will allow them to store municipal waste, which is what you're trying to avoid, obviously, and I agree with that, but is their intent to follow down that path, or we don't know?
By Republic Services?
Yeah.
Yes, my understanding is yes.
They had called me, I will tell you, and this was, I don't know, months ago, and they, they said, "Come out, see our facility," they swore by their facility, so, so they have made it clear their intent is to follow up and do that.
And eventually, yes.
Oh, okay. And the DEP, when does this, when is the timeframe when they will be granted this?
So the DEP is current, so this is what is complicated, right? The DEP, again, granted this permit to the prior owner, and now the application in front of them is to, now, I am hoping that is to just move it over to the new owner, right? Same, same permit, new owner. The case I have tried to make to the DEP is that, you know, we should have, that permit should have never been granted, A, there, there has never been municipal solid waste, this has never been and currently is not a municipal solid waste transfer station, so it really isn't about just like changing the name on the building, right? It is not, it is currently a recycling processing center. And, but again, that's not, that is sort of beyond, out of my control, right? But what I can do, and what we can do as a council, as a city, is create some guidelines around where this type of facility would go, not just for, for my residents in Hazelwood, but for residents everywhere. And I feel like the 500, you know, the floodplain, you know, not being in a floodplain, should there be a flood, you know, obviously, and then 500 feet from, you know, homes or businesses seems like a fairly reasonable...
So where Republic is situated now, then they break one of those, the 500 feet within residential, or what, wouldn't they conform with there?
If they...
I mean, as...
You mean if they wanted to build a new facility that was not, that was farther away?
No, 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 right where they're at, I mean, where they intend, where they're thinking...
The current building is about 300 feet from people's homes.
Okay, so that would make them in violation then as to your...
Well, no, because they don't have a municipal solid waste transfer station at that location.
No, I'm saying if they were to pursue it, if they got the DEP...
Then it would not comply with our, yes, with our ordinance, right.
Or if we did pass this, then they would, they would be out of compliance because they're within 300 feet, is what I'm saying with this facility. If they're not floodplain there, it would be the proximity to residential that would make them unable to...
I mean, there's a number of things in this, also with the type of building, you know, that this be enclosed, there's a number of criteria. And again, just to, just to clarify, I did not write, I mean, you know, and this is based on the criteria for municipal solid waste transfer stations, sort of... this is based on the criteria for municipal solid waste transfer stations, sort of in other municipalities.
Do we have facilities now? Do you, that you know of, or?
I, that I don't know, I'm guessing we don't, but I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Okay, I'm, I don't know what to think, I mean, I agree with what you're trying to do, I just, I didn't realize that the Republic, and again, they did reach out to me, they were, like, we want you to see how well we run our facility, I guess, but I didn't realize that they, their intent was to pursue that until today, I guess, so, I thought you were just safeguarding in case they were to pursue that, so, so they actually, the, the old company applied for the permit, the old owners of...
Right.
Yeah, and now, this company now received, they're going to be receiving, or they haven't received it yet.
They haven't received it yet, I mean, it's, again, that's another front, you know, I'm, of course, community members don't want to see that, the argument being that the permit should have never been issued, especially given the state of the facility at the time.
Okay, I, I wonder, I guess, I, my only question is, like, did Republic, when they purchased this facility, consider that as being part of the reason why they purchased that?
I can't speak to that, I can't speak to that, yeah.
Okay, I'll abstain today, I guess, but, yeah.
Need further first round? Second round, Councilman Wilson.
Director Hornstein, will you come to the table, please? Hi, you. Can you say your name and...
Chris Hornstein, Director Public Works.
Okay, with Republic, how long is the contract?
I'm not familiar with the, the term, we know, we do utilize them for landfill services, and obviously, they took over this recycling center, and so, the previous contract was with Recycle Source, and upon transition of ownership, they were assigned that.
Have we reused a different recycling center?
I don't know the history on that, sir, no.
All right, so then, the waste transfer center, waste transfer station, that's a definition in this amendment to the zoning code. So, with River View Park, regards to River View Park, you know, we have waste that's dropped off in a, in a dumpster, I'm not sure what those are called, like, the larger railroad dumpsters. And, you know, the, you know, there's a group, well, there's, you know, there's that lot of interest in getting that out of there, and then, that's part of our conversation to look at locations, and in the location discussion, we were talking about, I'm not going to mention location, but we're talking about the location, and I thought in the actual diagram there, like, in the whole design, that that was called waste transfer station.
No.
And you used the term waste, okay, good. Just want to make sure that how we operate doesn't...
Yeah, we...
Yeah, because we're definitely transferring waste.
Yes, we're transferring our own waste, right?
Okay.
Like, the city's waste, is non-residential waste that would come from garbage cans, et cetera, right? So, like, yes, we, and we've had this conversation, it was the point of order with the consent order, with the DEP for our streets divisions.
Right.
We do not operate our own waste transfer stations.
Okay, great, so this wouldn't apply to us?
Correct.
I just want to confirm, because, you know, from my recollection, I, I thought I, you know, heard you use those terms, but, sounds good, thanks.
Need further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to refer to the Planning Commission for reporting recommendation. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Bill will be referred. Deferred Papers, Bill 2025-1417.
Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning code, Article I, introduction and establishment, Section 90203 zoning map, to rezone parcels 45A166 and 45E43 from R1DH Single Unit Detached Residential High Density to UC MU Urban Center Mixed Use.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1417, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. New Papers, Bill 2354.
Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative, Article IX Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 174A, the Pittsburgh Land Bank, by amending Section 174A13 Policies and Procedures, Strategic Plan and Annual Report to modify the Pittsburgh Land Bank's annual reporting deadline from December 31st of each year to 120 days following the end of the fiscal year.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize that the bill, you know, does put in, put this, so this will be a change to whenever the, the Pittsburgh Land Bank's report is due, and due to council, or due to the public, you know, in general, and this would move it back to 120 days from December 31st, which does align with whenever the URA does their annual report, so, I appreciate everyone's support on this, thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2354, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 2345, Resolution Amending Resolution 798 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement, or agreements or amendments thereto with change agents training for access to their learning management system and consultative assistance to adopt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for e-learning by increasing the approved amount by $18,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $90,000 over five years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2345, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Our final committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 2346, Resolution Amending Resolution 697 of 2023 entitled, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh in Connection with the URA's Application for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant for the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center in the Amount of $2,229,987 in authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose to increase the grant award by $500,000 to $2,729,987.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Where's the money coming from?
Discussion?
I'm sorry, could you just tell me where the money's coming from?
Looks like it's a grant, increase the award amount by 500,000.
From DCT, okay, thank you. Councilman Wilson, I just want to say real quick, your people have been coming over to Sheridan and to the West End Senior Center, and they're eager to get back home.
It's been taking a while, it's been taking a while, yeah, tell me about it.
They're so nice, but they're eager to get home, they love their center in the...
Are you saying you don't want Northsiders over there?
Yeah, we got, we got Northsiders, hey, my kids are Northsiders now, right? Like, two grandkids and my son.
Need further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 2346, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. So, exhausts our standing committee's meeting, we do have meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:30. Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 2149 relative to outdoor retail sales and service. Speaker, speaker registration will close at 11:30 today. It has closed. On Thursday, October 23rd, with sessions at 3:00 PM and 3:30 PM, council will hold a briefing as it relates to the selection process for the 2025 NED funding, Bill 2386. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, October 28th, and their standing committee's meeting on Wednesday, October 29th, both at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form from council meeting webpage by the deadline, and you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a, I apologize for not being able to be here today, I'm at home baking a birthday cake for Councilman Conklin, I just want to, want to recognize his birthday here.
I didn't realize he was another year older, I would really relish the moment to say, "Happy birthday, Pappy."
Happy birthday, Pappy.
Thank you, Councilman Charlin.
Thank you.
Councilperson Charlin, you were following in your predecessor's footsteps well.
Oh, yeah.
Are you, are you a Libra, Councilman?
I am.
Wow, me too, who'd have thought?
I knew we were just the one.
Yeah, that's right.
I knew you were the one.
You both talk over people.
Seeing...
Ouch.
No other comments, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.